Yeah, but the governor.
Yeah, my daughter's like, yeah, there's.
Good afternoon, everybody. I suggest we do the pledge at our regular meeting. Benefit of the public. Mr. Wessel's going to lead us tonight. So roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer.
Yep, I'm here.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth.
Present.
Chairman Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Present.
Commissioner Eldar.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Well, we have a proposed agenda in front of us. Sean and his team have put together a bunch of stuff. I have talked to Sean about maybe ending this meeting at 5:30 so we could take a little bit of break before our 6:30 meeting. So Sean says he can tell us all he knows twice. Thanks, Sean. Commissioner Lautner.
Twice. If it would please the commission, I would make a motion to approve the agenda making action items discussion items. I understand that's a standard agenda, but we're just so we know, we're not going to be taking any action or making any recommendations. So it would be just discussion?
Any objection?
No.
We have amended agenda to approve all those who support.
I'm not sure you have a support yet.
Support.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you.
We do now have a motion. All those in support of the motion say aye.
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 Motion approved.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We have public comment at this time? Any commissioner comment at this time? Deb, you want to kick this off?
Sure. I think this is a new process, fair enough to say it's a new process for many of us, the majority of us, I think. Certainly, from Sean's perspective and working with Jen and Kathy, I think it's been enlightening. It's been, I would say, I think it's fair to say challenging. And this is just the beginning of the process. This is literally just ground zero. So from here, there will be a lot more opportunity for discussion and questions and all that stuff, but I applaud all the work that's been done. So really thank the team for their effort.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. I guess I would start and kind of echo Deb. So in some ways, I'm uninformed, but also unencumbered, maybe by anything that's been done in the past. So let me start with what my objectives would be. And I think they're kind of following maybe where Commissioner Lautner started was I see the next, however, amount of time to get best around three primary objectives. One is to orient everybody to the material, just to make sure we're all starting from the same place. I think there'd be, I would like to spend some time on level setting on the approach to what those materials say. And the third thing that I would love to get out of this is establishing a path to kind of where Deb was just going with the, we know we're at the early stages of this. I do this very much while it's proposed, it's preliminary in that we haven't had the opportunity to discuss. I foresee needing to go deeper probably with the appropriate people teams, staff in more than one of these areas. And so, you know, kind of leaving here with some thought about getting your input on how everybody would see that that's happening, I would love to get that. I guess I would ask if those resonate or if you have other objectives as a board to try to work into it.
Good starting point?
Yeah. I guess one of the only objectives I have, which I think dovetails when I look at this and I look at, is to get to a budget that doesn't require 753 amendments to be the end budget. To a budget that we stick to, otherwise it certainly isn't a budget.
Anything else?
All right, so let's dive in. I don't have any other way to do it other than to get into the organization and how goes fast or taking much time as we want. Up front, the first couple of things, I think, maybe starting with the finish line. So by the time we get to the end, I would expect that we would come swing back to the very first stage around appropriations and what makes up an adopted budget. I think we put in the book kind of the starting point, which is where 2023 leaves us. In addition to that is the board rules, the budget rules in that second set of documents. So just out here for reference right now, with the kind of the past is at least a good gateway to future up those items. So the rest of the book is really organized. The way I think about it is around groups of activities or funds or open to different words, but basically, I'd love to walk through the sections if it doesn't make sense the way the way it is right now. And that first section that we have in here is our revenue. So if you look, and I won't, I think this is obvious, but let me just say, we, all of us who've touched this for the last couple of months can tell you how many pages are in each one of these. So we don't have page numbers, but up on the very top with the, these are consistent. So one of seven basically calls out that section's pages. And over on the top left is the fund we're talking about. In this very first section, the first seven pages are the material revenues of the county all laid out by the county. We could spend some time on this. I'm going to swing back to all of these, so I don't intend to just read by. But at least to orient, that first section, revenues are broken out in the general fund.
So. So. Go ahead.
I look to my left and I look to my right. Mine says one of three, yours says one of seven. I went too much. Okay, that's good to start from the beginning. Okay. Thank you. Okay, good.
I would just even more basic, I, like, I remember not having ever worked with a five year budget. So does everybody, did they catch that looking through this, the five year budget? So we can track where our expenses were back to Deb 2020. And then we'll have the requests over there. What we have, what we finished in '23, and we'll have requests, and then we'll have whatever changes is the line. So I just think, I really like this. I like this format. I always have. I think it just works really well because it gives us a really good understanding of where we've been.
So to that point, does it make sense kind of what we, what the columns in here that we've lined up and how they work? It's the Commissioner Lautner's point. We've got the history basically working its way left to right. We started with a point in time with this year. So in effect, we rolled forward to June, our words, rolled forward June 30th as our starting point for the budget, which is the third column from the right. So we jumped off of history and moved to looking at 2023's amended budget as it stood in the middle of the year this year as our best start point. And then the column next to that is intended to reflect the department changes or requests that were made so that we captured in this version of the budget. And this will be, this is a consistent format through the whole book. So it's probably a good time to pause.
So just a quick, that, I see the 2023 amended budget and the department changes. Can you more further explain the 2023 budget rolled to 2024?
In general, it is going to be identical except for, I look for the help, but to the extent that we continue like tonight, we will have budget amendments on the table. That will start to drift us further away from that amended budget. It was this, I think it is a snapshot in a piece at a point in time. We won't necessarily date a rolled column to reflect that, if that makes sense.
Because I'm still not sure what that particular column refers to. I see the column to the left as being the amended budget and then the changes or requests. But what does 2023 budget rolled into 2024 specifically?
Basically, it's just trying to say we're going to start next year with where we ended with our view of 2023.
Okay.
Best view that we had as of mid-year this year.
So looking at it, I would say like if you're private sector, you took all your expenses that you had in 2023, or excuse me, the budget that was approved in December of 2022 for 2023 is our base. We changed that base from 702 to 720 regarding salaries. But most line items, unless it's something that Deb has put on her list, is going to be status quo unless a department has changed it. So for instance, when we look, if you're looking at page 1 of 7, the top one says fund balance forward. So the amended budget for 2023 is 107811. And then the 23 to roll is the same. So as of that, there was no amendment. You're in 24, you're using 965. So at some points, the amended budget may look different than the rolled. Because, for instance, we brought for you, when they adopted the budget in 2023, you did not have the 3% flat amount wage increase that was authorized by the board in September. So it's probably going to look a little bit backwards, but there's going to be departments that are going to stay the same. So what it's easiest for us to take the 2023 approved and make that active and then change those line items accordingly regarding union contracts or as Deb has put in her letter to you, the non-union also include a 3.25 wage in here, increase that's projected and is in here. So when we're looking at that, how about the easiest way to get to 24 is for us to use the approved budget from '23 and then show you any and all amendments in '23 to roll that. And that's our starting point for '24.
So the 2023 budget rolled to '24 is our benchmark. Right now, in this book, they match, the 2023 amended and the rolled. As we go through the next few months, looking on this, we're going to have some amendments that are going to change the 2023 amended budget count, but we're not going to change this book for that. We're going to be looking at the roll, which is your June 30th snapshot where we were on June 30th.
Correct?
Yeah.
And it could just be a wording thing, Doug?
Yeah, that's just.
Yeah, it's a wording.
If I look at those numbers, they're all exactly the same between those two columns. There's not a single number that's different between that column and the column prior.
Right.
So I just.
But it will, it will change through time.
Yeah.
The third printed column from the right will change as we're working through, but the second column won't. We're not going to roll.
Yep.
Okay. Correct?
So the department changes or requests, is that what additional requests for next year?
Okay.
For '24?
Minus, minus something.
So you're getting hit right on the heart of it, I think, when with that question. And I was, I was kind of calling that, there's a methodology or an approach to all of this, and we should spend some time on exactly what you're asking. There's kind of a, there's a history of what we include, I think, in this initial proposed version. And I can talk to each one of those items, these categories, because, and my goal, I should have listed one of my objectives, is to not get you frustrated with me because honestly, as I've gone through it, there's a rule and then there's a couple of exceptions. And we ought to talk about both of those, what do those categories cover, if we go through this.
Fair.
This is, this is a work session, so I won't recognize you. Just if, if nobody's talking.
Could I just ask, we didn't have a fund balance before 2023?
So that's a, I hate that that is the first line that shows up in the budget book because what really happens over time is that that line, that line is used in effect to be the reconciling item, if you will. And so let's jump all the way to the punchline. If you, if you look, ignore the amounts in the 2023 columns, but look at the department changes or requests. That $965,150 in there is, in Deb's letter, it's referred to as projected fund balance amount required for a balanced budget is $965,150. So in effect, that is the amount of the general fund that we would draw down as a result of what's proposed in here. Does that make sense? In effect, your expenditures without that line, the increase would exceed revenues by $965,000.
So it's less than what they did last year, but we don't know what they did in 2000 or 2001 or 2002.
We could go back and get those books. That account gets zeroed out in here for.
Because it's not a, it's a budgeting tool. It's not actually a line that we charge to. So if you want to go to your next tab, which is your expenditure summary, on page three, the last page tells you your general total, or expenditures, your general total net revenue over expenditures. So in 2020, most likely, if Sean went back, he's going to find that we used fund balance to balance the budget, but you actually had in essence revenues over expenditures of 410. 2021, we would have used a fund balance forward number. That fund balance forward number, in essence, would have grown by 186,390. For 2022, you did use fund balance. So if fund balance was budgeted for 2022 at a million, you used 254,000 of them.
So I don't want to scare you though going in because that's where we ended up. But I think if we went back and pulled, actually, correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, but if we went back and started the budget process and looked what was consistent, you would not have seen, for example, where generally referred to historically, where we've run a, in effect, we've had more revenue than expense in the general fund. I think it's been typically, it's been how we use practice to enter, and we ought to talk about why and how that is happening. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and that's kind of along with the question. I mean, what I understand, a little bit of the questions I've asked is that the tax revenue is not actually based on what we expect to receive in that fiscal year. We expect it'll be much more than that, which I don't understand why we don't just use a real number for that and not use the make believe number above it, but.
This is a great discussion, so should we get it while we're on the revenues?
Yeah.
But we're right here, so I'm.
And I'm able to explain, but I've had, you know, anyone looking at this from just the outside is going to say, you're running a deficit budget. Your planned revenues and your planned expenditures do not match by close to a million dollars. I can tell them, well, we really think we're going to have more revenues than that. And then they would ask me, well, why is that not the number you're using for the revenues?
We've always, we've always said we like to budget conservatively in case. On revenues. So, yeah, on revenues.
But, but when you.
Well, we do, some expenses we do.
It's hard for me to understand that a conservative budget is one that has a million dollar deficit.
But we have overstated expenses, childcare fund.
Expenses, we have overstated and revenues, we've understated.
Let me jump because I don't think we're going to get it. My thought is, I have the wrong order. Let's go back to methodology and then, then we'll get to the very beginning of what's in here because I want to go there. I think it's a good question. So in general, here's some of the, Commissioner Lautner was hitting on them, but when I go to approach, so in effect, one of the, back, back up from this book and what's in here right now, I think Eldar asked the question about what's in the column, department changes or requests. I would, in general, it reflects what the department has asked for in those lines that are, what are truly controllable expenses within that department. So what is not controllable, I think Jen mentioned, 702 to 720. So those are the magic numbers here. If you look, unfortunately, it doesn't show up well on that first page, but if you look at expenditures, like look to the first group of expenditures under the tab called legislative, and it just happens to be the board commissioners.
So which page are you on?
So now we're in tab.
Board of Commissioners Department Total?
Yeah. So it's page one of 84.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Is anybody there? So when we're talking about 702 through 720, if you look at those first group of accounts, they roll down the rows on the left side. All of those things, I used to call these people costs. They're all the costs related to staffing. I think folks here all in general will those together and refer to them as staffing levels, but it's everything that comes with a body, which includes salary and wage, but also overtime. Also holidays, work hazard pay, per diems, pension, social security, hospitalization, part of the process, you should do MERS, retirement, life insurance. So all of those expenditures follow a person in my mind. Those I would consider, there's a, so here's the price of entry is our approach historically has been, we're going to give you a view of what's in those departments from a staffing perspective based on current staffing levels, like number of people. And the reason we don't, would we centralize the budgeting process related to those is because we're in the best position, we think, to do that centrally. So Kathy's worked her little fingers off, we've gone through 130 people and come up with the magical, what do those 130 people look like split by department as we enter 2024? And so you have to make an assumption about what level of pay will they, will that entire staff have. So implied in the book as it sits today is a three and a half percent, three and quarter percent, I screwed up my first number, 3.25% raised across the board, meaning all non-union and all union staff.
So the union contracts are ratified at that, so we're, that's kind of just three and a quarter percent proposed for non-union employees, that's put into this. So I think that's a discretionary discussion for you.
So with that, as the salaries increase, all the other pieces move a lot of step. And so we've done our best to go through the process of syncing those. But what's in the book is constants, I think, constant staff as to June 30, 2023 with an increased level of pay. So that's a, I should have graphs for you. I feel like I want to get up and do the PowerPoint thing, but if you looked at the total expense, it's not surprisingly, this is our biggest area of pay. And it's largely what's in the book right now, not affected much by the department needs because we, we, in effect, made the assumption, roll it forward, take a central assumption, centralized driven assumption around pay increases. Does that make sense?
So when departments are saying they want to increase staffing levels and, you know, the discussion about we need to bring staffing levels discussion to the budget, not all of them are identified in this, in this book that you have.
In fact, we try, this is one to Melinda's point, none of them should be in there. What we've tried to deliver to you is, in effect, the ability to, on the way in, catch those things like a request to take a roll from a four day roll to a five day roll, like a request to add a, go in the morning. So does that make sense? That's kind of, that, that rule is, I would say, is extremely consistent. I can't think of any exceptions to that.
So those will all be things as you talk with the department heads or talk, you know, in terms of, you know, and part of my recommendations is going to be some of those staffing level changes that are not reflected in the budget as it is right now.
It's another base that's an unknown then, right, at this point?
Because it's not approved or, that's probably the best way, unknown.
Unknown, okay.
I think one thing about that is the snapshot on June 30th is just, you know, frame out what we look like on June 30th, the bodies, the people, where they are in their levels, where they'll move on an anniversary. We take, but it's that, no imaginary staff level, no imaginary person, just what they do. That's for you to discuss upon presentation, I guess. So this is what we know and what it looks like going forward.
So I know I'm going to go a little bit here, it's unintended, I promise, but if you, where Commissioner Rexroth was going with revenues, let me talk about the revenues that make their way into here. So if you go back again, and I'm sorry to do this, go back to page 1 of 7, under the very first tab called revenue summary. And you can see again, following that same chain of accounts, now we're looking at the account sequence that starts with revenue numbers and you see a bunch of 401s. And stop on that second line called current taxes, 00000402. So that line is our primary revenue source, which is property taxes. And it, the source of it, here to point on is the, we're using the PAO 4029 information from May of this year from the equalization department. And in that would be your 2023, basically the mileage rate as well as your taxable value for the properties. And so in effect, what we're doing is looking at that 12,119,703 would be, in your words, 2023 expected revenue from that, from that source. Does that make sense?
Boy.
So there is no, in the methodology, in the approach taken, there is no attempt to quantify that in 2024. But we all will sit here and think, say, what direction are property values going? And then make an assessment. But we could make an approximation, which in other businesses, other places, you may make that determination that would, in effect, what I want to do is make a forecast, stuff like that line would look like. That is not in here today.
Is that, is that doable?
Andrew is generating the estimate, but it would be exactly that estimate.
I mean, so right now, though, what we have is a number, and we have a deficit of a million dollars, that we're hoping somehow that works out without having spent any math time on understanding what that number might be. It's really.
If I could, again, taxable value is, right, is another snapshot in time. What Andrew is working with in equalization is a snapshot of all the properties in the county on December 31st of 2022. That snapshot is what they start working from, all the assessments, all the touchdowns. You go through the board review in March, that changes it, but it's a moving target through the year. Then you've got Arizona missions board review in July, then things are in motion again. And then there's another one in November, December, I can't remember, this is my other hat. So that dollar amount of what the properties are valued at in the county is moving all through the year. So we could.
And we have new construction. Then we have new construction.
New construction, you have uncapping, it's one property sells, since it's generally short property and grandma and grandpa are paying at $250,000 taxable value and they sell it to Sean when he moves into a area, it uncaps to 1.2 million. And we pay that 1.2 million and we get the revenue on that uncapping. But we don't know that until another snapshot is taken on December 31st of '23. Then, you know, then we'll have, John can come in and say, gosh, we've got a really nice taxable value, so relax, that $900,000 isn't going to get, isn't going to be used to balance this out. We'll have a lot more revenue. But we, we will not really feel that effect until December 31st. until December 31 of 23. This is an improved budget. We're working with it. We're paying our bills. And as Mr. Pete Cox said, the state is not so concerned about our revenues if we nail it. They're more concerned about our expenses.
Yeah, I, I am worried about both as a taxpayer in one accounting. So, yeah, yeah.
I can only.
Yeah.
So this isn't really, shouldn't be about my thinking. This has been balanced practice. I think what I can, we could help with is framing this relative to the past. It's the question.
Yeah, well, that's the question I was just going to ask.
So I do believe that we've entered, but I swear this. I'll go get the number instead. But this is actually on the lower end of that. But then think about, let me get through the rest of this before we guess.
I'll stop on that.
No, 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 keep going. Because I, I know, I understand where you're coming from. And I would argue that any revenue source can be very complex. But that doesn't necessarily mean that you can't take a look at those, the drivers of that revenue and make an estimate about what those drivers could or would look like. Historically, that is not, is not here. And so this reflects that.
Okay.
So if you, yes.
Oh, John had his.
I was just going to say, even at 123123, we would not be able to consider you would have your whole grand. So that won't.
It depends on the inflation rate, yes. So like this time, the inflation rate was higher. So there was no rollback.
Yeah.
Certainly, I mean, as Melinda will tell you, through the years are tied in even when. The numbers that change in this book are not typically from this point on. Something that Sean, myself, or Kathy will recommend, they're actually your choice. So if you get L429 and he wants to give you an example and you want to bump that number 128, that's your choice. And if you have a recommendation that the board wants to move that way, that's what you will do. The, the recommendations of prior boards have always been something that Chet had said over the last 10 years. There are multiple factors within this budget. And the factors within that budget are driving outside in. So let's, for instance, I think Mr. Wessel said childcare. We may have budgeted $463,000 to be transferred to another fund. We may, at the end of the year, only have to transfer 100,000. So are that nine? Now there's three there. You have a $440,000 contingency line item. That's in essence, a way to balance your budgets at the end of the year if the departments have shortfall. Last year, I think I used four grand, maybe, out of that, out of that contingency line. So again, the way Chet used to, I want to say spin it. And so you had 900, you didn't move three, now you're to six. You didn't take 440, now you're at two. And that would be if everybody spent every single line item, would you be in a deficit? That's how it's kind of been looked at in the past.
Yeah, I get it. It just, it's a semantics thing. It's just, no one else in any other part of the world will look and say, this is a conservative budget when you were planning on spending a million more than you're taking it. That's just, that's just.
Yeah.
Can I?
Yes.
I give you, and the way I've had to frame this in my own mind is to think about, and try to keep track. And I'd rather read this on paper, but in my head, it's the other pieces that are out there that I think we should consider, which are. So let me hit you with a couple of other ones that we can swing back to that note.
Yeah, and we could, yeah.
So in general, revenue, grant revenue in the ballet is excluded from this. So in effect, one of the big gap closers in that amount that shows a $965,000 drawdown on the general fund is made up of grant money. And we can talk about where those grants have been excluded. Again, common practice or traditional practice here in the county, I think we can talk about to Jen's point, is that consistent with how you'd like to go forward? I think there's, there are other items in here. Before we get off revenue in total. So the other two big components that are mill, have a millage rate that are in the book, quote unquote, right now, includes the senior millage and the early childhood. Today, the senior, when we get to that fund, we'll see the revenue from the senior is again that same methodology we just talked about with, with property tax. So the operating part of millage. With early childhood, at this point in time, what we've done is, is help consistent with 2023 budgeted amount. And so in effect, this is where there's a general rule, which is, let's stay consistent with prior year. So the other revenue pieces are out there with 23 millage rates. Actually, if you think about the early childhood, we will back, back the year because of pending decisions on that. So instead of sticking in, in a, a revenue increase in that, when we get to that fund, we'll see that that number is actually consistent with what's budgeted in 2023. Does that make sense? So it's like, what, I think the general path has been, you know, I'm trying to say this, and it's like, there's a general rule and a methodology. And then there's the exception is traditionally what's, what's been brought forward in this initial preliminary proposed budget tries to give the optionality to the board before we stick it into a proposed, go down the road that decisions may. In effect, what we're trying to do is help surface those decision points for each of you to consider. And I can hit those.
And I think that, again, it kind of comes back to when you build this budget and yes, you balance your revenues to your expenditures by plugging this number, 965,000. We, as Sean mentioned, we zero out the grants because there's no guarantee we're going to get those grants. So build the budget on what you know. Build the budget on what you actually really know what is going to happen. Don't bet on something you don't know. You could plug a remaining grant in here. You could plug any of these in what we've historically got. But then it will be the year we don't get it. So we zero those revenues out. We say we're, we're not going to count on those. To balance revenue against our expenditures, we're going to utilize 965 at this time. But then we didn't ring it. So that brings that dividend for general fund down.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we're counting on it anyway.
Well, yeah, but you know, you just, I bet on the things you do know.
Yeah.
And then have odds wide open that if we didn't get any of our grant money, we are going to do, if we spend every penny of our expenditures, we will do the general fund, 965.
So we just get a bunch of revenue ones and we can go and make the detail on. So be an individual grant that we want, or like, kind of. I think on the expenditure side, so those revenues are opportunities to kind of close debt, 965, if you will. On the other side of the equation, there are expenditures that are not in here today. I just want to be clear with those because Michelle Algar was hitting on it. In general, capital expenditures are excluded from this process at this point in time. And then there's the gap ups. And there's a couple of items that are in here. If you think, hopefully it makes sense why that, that the gate opens for a few things, but not for everything. And those include things like, the biggest example would be, we've traditionally purchased a, and we replenished the sheriffs. We had a set kind of consistent rate over time. And I'm just, not to go nine miles deep in this, but if you read the narrative, which we'll get to, the sheriff requested five vehicles this year. For consistency, say, this initial view of budget includes three vehicles, which is more consistent with, with historical acquisition models. Still on the table would be additional vehicles. So that's an example of, you said there weren't CapEx items, capital expenditure items in here, but there are a couple. They are very minimal, and the intention was to actually use things that surfaced either through the CIP process earlier in the year or through narratives where department managers have identified something to bring them into the budget. Those are going to work the opposite way on the 965, not to zero the number. But those are, those are decisions to be made. And the, I wanted to put all of that on the table because at this point in time, I don't want to, I want to be fair. I'm sensitive to the, to the wording on that column, and this is probably my own fault, but department changes or requests kind of where Michelle Algar went with what's in there. And honestly, what's in there is kind of what was in there last year, unless the department manager or head identified a reason to increase in items that they can control, so not personnel. But what's not in there are things where they generally raise their hand and say, I want to spend from a capital expenditure perspective. So I know that sounds a little, like, I almost feel like I've got to put a decision tree on the wall and go and help walk through that. But we can keep coming back to that. Again, the logic, the overriding logic that I think is pure is trying to get to a point, a starting point where the board, we haven't intentionally put the board behind a decision or something that was, was brought in that you would be unaware of.
I mean, I guess I, in my mind, this is an operating budget, not a, and so things already we're talking about that we know aren't in there is lower level.
Yeah, so let's talk about those. This is again back to my, and it's awkward, right? The, the world doesn't stop when we strike a balance sheet date or when we strike an artificial date like June 30, which would be the point where we rolled all of this forward. And to your point, since then, a couple of big things have either happened or are on the table about to happen. And I've tried to capture them in my note and my, my notes to myself because they have their days. This is in, this is in. Yes, or no. So that we keep a good list of those things because I know that this will not remain static over the time that we're going to be talking about it. And so lower level, sheriff slave vote.
Tower.
Couple of other ones.
Tower.
Towers.
Tower.
All of those would be examples of things that are in flight that may or may not impact this. I mean, we may, we may fund the sheriff slave vote out of 2023 depending on your decisions. And it may or may not impact this. So that list is, you know, around the, the line where we're dividing it. We have to start to make some assumptions about then and how that would be funded, timing to whether it matters or not.
I think having some historical perspective, sitting in these chairs two summers ago, '21, I think the fund balance forward in the proposed budget was 1.5 million.
Really?
I think I'm right. Jen, do you remember?
Probably close.
And so the, the ending effect of 2021 was a ding on the general fund budget of 250, 254,000. But to sit in your chairs today, two years ago, that number, that 965 is 1.5 million, if that helps you. And the end result idea is a ding of 250.
So this 965 isn't the worst.
It's important to understand that.
Don't be the worst. Well, tell me if I'm wrong, because you've got that as a potential overage. But you haven't factored in the fact that we might get $2 million more in taxes.
It's unknown.
So if that's the case, if, if they do dutifully send all their money to John, we could be a million over. So we, I've always operated on that assumption that we budget low, knowing we're going to get more money.
Yeah.
So we're going to probably get almost $2 million more than we've budgeted for. So just to, just to, just, just to make this even more fun, something that flies around in the ethers of my mind is we have a point broadcasting to pay off at some point. We are going to owe them 1.8. And we have District Six and part of District Seven that we haven't paid for yet. So whether John does some magic with his DTR, whether we can take out a bond. But we've got $3 million there that I don't expect will pay out of this.
And you're not throwing HVAC stuff in there yet either, which is the other.
But we're going to have to figure out.
A little more for the next one.
Could we bond those kind of figures now?
We're walking down the road fast. We get, we need some libel, but I can be more mature. Said that we're ready now.
How fast will you be ready? I got people who are chomping at the bit for broadband.
This is a board decision, not up to the chair. So it'd be as fast as we can move.
We have.
That discussion's got to come later.
Yeah.
I just want to put it in this context, though. We've got $800,000 left of CARPA money that probably needs to go to District Six. So just to getting that going. And then in the future, we've got to figure out the rest of point. But you're right, that's not this. I just wanted to.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor that whole, I'll, I'll get off of that thing. But it might be helpful just to have a supplemental that, I mean, it just, it seems really hard for me to budget with, it might be 2 million, it might be 150, it might be 710. Historical data must be able to provide some guideline that could say, you know, I think to expect between 700 and, and 1.3 or something, that seems to be more responsible budgeting.
How would I frame it? Doug would be, I think that there are a understandable number of drivers of what you're describing. But they're very volatile. And so things like the inflation rate, its impact on headly and the overall property value here in the county, the, the amount of activity that generates a sale and a revaluation, if you will. And if we, if we, none of those are beyond modeling. And to me, the value is to understand those assumptions. And then ultimately, you learn from watching how they play out. That's why people spend time forecasting items that are really part of the forecast. I'm not sure, I, I guess, this is the opinion part of Michelle. So I, I'm not sure I'm in the best position to make those assumptions from the seat I sit in. I do think that it'd be, that I could see value in going down that road with somebody like Andrew to, to start to think about that in, in the future. It is not undoable, but it is complex to John's point. And to me, the value would be to start to talk in terms of which ones of those drivers of revenue didn't perform the way that we thought. Inflation was lower. That sounds great, but all of a sudden now you run into a heavy challenge and the impact of that on, right? Like, we, we could, we could have those discussions. To me, I love that because now we're talking about the things that are going on in accounting that I think are material, that would be of interest. And if you started to get ahead of that, could you get further ahead of where, what's the right, what's the right expenditure mix at some different board revenue?
Yeah. All right, thank, I don't want to keep, get out of this conversation, move forward as well, so.
For the President of the Board, if we do have to approve currently levy in the spring with L429s, we do update to the budget for product.
And that's in my name, is that right, John?
Yeah.
So we do update this, and that's, the students will have hard numbers to reflect the point of war would be made. But something else to consider is, if we budget it, we'll spend it.
That's a serious look in that. Like, I nailed it, I know you.
Yeah, I, I get it. It's just, I'll just stop talking about it.
Yeah, so Doug, we always under pressure.
But, but, you know, when you, when you look at, look at, look at, look at our county or size and look at our lake shores and look at our vistas, and, and you think, why are we only at 12? we only at 12? We have millions, I, I would guess millions of dollars of land off the tax rolls in this And I really firmly believe that we need to have some change in legislation because this burden is falling on fewer and fewer and fewer people all the time. So I think we need some legislation change to capture some sort of revenue from those lands. We see it in the L4429 or the, the 4029, pages of them, pages of them.
And why?
I'm, I'm actually, not federal land, but we have federal lands, lots off the tax rolls, national parks, yes. We have a few county parks off the tax rolls, we have a few churches and schools off the tax rolls. Those are what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is the land conservancy, conservancy. All that land is non-taxable. And I just think it would be a fair thing to do to, to just capture some sort of payment in lieu of taxes at least for those lands.
Observations that are all on the rule, they just have.
Easements are. Easements, if it's still in private ownership, they're still paying taxes, but there are, yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely. And that's a good thing.
And the flip side of that, I hear you. The flip side of that is that preserves our lands, keeps us being filled with housing developments, and draws the visitors that keep our businesses alive. So yes, a balance would be good, though. A balance would be good.
The coal's land, that could be affordable housing. It's a conversation I think we have to have.
It would be nice to have a balance, some sort of.
Even the federal government pays a payment in lieu of taxes.
So these, these expenditures, and these have been reviewed with department heads so far, is.
Yeah, let me talk about the process, that's a good question. So what can we do to kick off the process here? We followed kind of the historic script, if you will. And so back in second week, first week, second week of June, I forget the exact date, we went to each department head with a set of information. So basically, we had a version of what you see in front of you with a column that said where the department column was blank and said, what do you think? And then what we were doing was blocking off those where I was talking about controllable and maybe expenses that they don't manage. So don't fill in people's parts. Don't fill in the capital expenditure necessarily, if you do, we can talk about it. But don't fill in things like allocated costs. So we haven't hit on those, but there's four big allocations that go on here, and we ought to get familiar with them. But in our internal service funds are things like we allocate out the heat cost, we allocate out coffee costs, we allocate out building and grounds. And so on each of those, where am I forgetting my telephone? Each of those, you know, don't worry about it. In effect, we're going to tell you what you consume. And then those remaining line items that they, the department control, like Jen was describing, if you don't, if you're good with it, don't write anything, and we're going to assume, we're going to, in effect, roll forward what you have. If you have an item you want to call out for an increase or a decrease, help us out. So in effect, they, they were given a shot at filling the controllable expenses of what you foresee for your department. In addition to that, what they're given was six different components of what we call the narrative, which I should be able to rattle off, but it's in the back of the book. But if you want capital expenditure, talk about it here. If you have professional certification, travel, memberships, subscriptions, things like that, that call out everything so that we can understand what kind of what your request is. And in general, what we've done is captured those department requests in that column, and then I put my asterisks up there, which is, with some exceptions, like the police, sheriff's vehicles, for example. So in general, and I want to say that again, in general, in general, because somebody's going to come in and say, I don't recognize the number because it's not what I submitted of. There's, there's been a little bit of filtering going on to try and, to preserve your role as the board commissioners.
But we do have a responsibility to look at all of those because there may be some that you're allowed to stay in there that would not be our priority.
And so what I've done with those is I've made my change. All those things that I'm aware that somebody has asked for, that hasn't made its way in here, that I feel like over, to be fair to the process over the coming weeks, that we would surface those to make sure that they're discussed in decision-making, if it's not a decision.
I want to pick on the childcare expense.
Yes.
The amount in there, we know is not because the rate from the state has changed, but the, but the budget request wasn't changed.
Right.
So we have a responsibility to look at all those.
That's one of my thoughts right away when you were asking, yeah, it's like, wait a minute, because that sharing ratio changed and the expenses went way up.
Well, the revenues, we kept static because that's what Cam reported, and we use those factors to how to balance it with those requests to move those people. So like the example I said, we put 467,000, we may not have to move much of it. But that's something that Sean will be watching in '24, you know, each quarter to see what needs to be moved.
The good news is our reimbursement will leave at 75%.
Right.
Of our report expenses. So we want to allow Cam to report to the state as many allowable expenses as we can, given a static budget, so we can recoup 75% of those dollars. We want to help them achieve that.
There's one other expenditure here that I just want to call out that is an assumption that I feel like is worth discussion all the time here. It's been, it's been practiced, the county is in effect putting incremental funding into the MERS line item, if you will, to, in an attempt to, to address the unaccountability. Last year, that was 250,000. I think in the past, we could go back and look at those amounts. In this starting point, we just held that constant of 2023. So in effect, 2024, there's a $250,000 funding of that, that incremental component to start So let me back, back up. I was going to kind of run through the book in orient, but I think hopefully that was some discussion around what I was calling the approach or the methodology that resulted in numbers in here. Is there, are there, while we're on that, are there other high-level things that we want to touch on? I think I've hit, I'm just checking my own notes to make sure I.
So basically, if somebody's going to thumb through the book, right? So they're going to go, okay, here's the public safety, and they're going to say, wow, okay, for public safety, it's going to cost us on the last page is 112,876 dollars. Say, okay.
So that one, be careful, let me.
There's more, there's more budgets in there. Okay, that's probably not a really good one.
Yeah.
So what would be a really good one? Well, if we take, you know, okay, take legislative, take commissioners, look at ours, that one might be easier. And you look at that, and you can think, okay, the final, like, okay, how did we get to that, you know, that number of 856,000? But if you look at staffing levels on the very first page, that explains that budget.
How on earth would we go from 169,000 to 345 when we haven't increased our salaries?
In the board commissioners, you added, you added staff.
That's the first page of your supplement.
That's what I'm talking about.
One of these. So we have.
Can we, so those are great questions. And I don't know whether the, the best thing is to start with one and run through all, or can I, because I think Melinda was hitting on the, let me just spend, and I won't act like you're, try not to make this too, too.
It looked complicated, but it's really not terrible.
It doesn't have, I think it hopefully, I don't know if it's like apple logic that you can just figure it out, but within each of these groups, so these tabs that are put together that follow the, the way back at the very start with your table of contents, the tabs are, are general groupings of departments, if you will. And so what Melinda was, was looking at, for example, in the one that we, the very first tab, we follow legislative. What happens to be in legislative is board of commissioners, which is Department 101, it's also attorney and legal fees, 10211. So if you go back to page three, you'll see the next department pop up. And then there's the third department, if you put one more page to page four, which is Northwest Michigan Council of Government. Those are the, the three departments that make up that first tab, because you have to be a little bit careful with jumping to the last page because that last page will only reflect the sum of the department. So all of these within the general fund section of the book are by department, if that makes sense.
Okay, so the salaries isn't just for the board commissioners?
No. No. Administration is.
No.
I was going to say, I would not give the increase.
If it is, I got to submit some requests.
You're the only one.
Snapping up off that $340,000, that is a little bit more than 6,000 in some areas.
345.
I'm sure Sean was going to mention it, but you know, when we made the transition from, you know, the board made the decision to move it into administration, the finance and those things, all of those components are running underneath that.
Yeah, you see the big jump in 2021 and 2022 when the department was added.
Okay.
So. So from 2020 to 2022. You guys are going back to that staffing level tab, is that right?
Salaries, yeah.
So if you follow, let's jump back there because I think this is the, I think this is the, how to use this thing, if you have.
Staffing levels.
So if you look at the very first page under staffing levels, that very first tab happens to be the board of commissioners. And so when you get back into this staffing, what I would, you know, give Kathy kudos for, this is everybody in county government on these pages. So at a person level, you can see what makes up the, the individual salary and what I was calling people-related costs that are on that, that, that page that you were looking at up under legislative, board commissioner 101. Does that make sense? And so if you want to know the detail of what's in the wage line, for example, what makes up that 345,000, you can see the individual roles, board of commissioners, person by person, putting down 345,000. And each of the departments on successive pages have that same level of detail. The columns that make up this page basically get you home on all of the other people-related costs. So there's components, there's a Blue Cross, Blue Shield, I'm sorry, column, there's a MERS column, there's a FICA column, so taxable components of. So in effect, this should answer all of our questions with deeper frame of access about what makes up within each of those departments upfront at the person level detail.
I'm going to apologize for like hijacking a little bit of the first part of the meeting, and I think what we're trying to, we're trying to get done today is understand how to use this book so that we can spend our next lovely part of our life digging through it so that when we come to the, so we come to the next meeting, we can be effective, right? That's really what the goal here is to understand. Okay, so I apologize.
That was the methodology, no?
Well.
No, I appreciate it.
Yeah, anyway, so.
Me too.
So each, each, can I go?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I hijacked it there, I'm not sure, somebody, was that, Melinda, were you wanting to go into, into one of these or just walk through?
Yeah, public safety is probably not a good one, why, this is half of our budget is public safety, I think. So we take one section of it or something, but I don't know what would be easier if you took.
So if you look at public safety, it's a good, good example, that first couple of pages in there, page five of '84 through seven of '84 are 225301, the department, which is our sheriff. And you can see that, to Melinda's point, when you add that up, that's a significant component of the government, which is in the order of 2.6 million dollars, basically, that makes up that, that department. This is maybe a good one and maybe a bad one because my, my earlier comment, most of the things in, you're going to flip through a number of these departments where it's repetitive, the line items, the account level detail that's in each one of them. And you'll see my comment on, they're not as controllable. In the sheriff's department, there's a lot of unique items, I think, which, and so.
So you know, we can't have those numbered, so like you pointed out, the sheriff's department, our very first section, so it's, what is it, just a couple pages?
Yeah, or three pages.
In that, one particularly is going to cost approximately 2,600,000?
Yes.
Okay. It's like the second page of our staffing level, and that explains what that's covered. So for that, what is it saying, $2 million, 2,600,000, we've got a detective, several road patrol deputies, several sergeants, et cetera, et cetera. But these aren't really numbered to reflect back unless we have to look over here at the.
Yeah, that's a good idea for next year, you've never had that before, where the, normally what you do is you correlate with that staffing level, right up in the corner, Kath puts the department, so it says 225301 Sheriff's Office.
Right.
This is, I'm with you.
Yeah. So staffing level is, or is on page seven of.
Yeah, page seven of staffing levels, yeah.
A little reference number to look at.
Yeah, it's a good idea, because like I know it by heart, Kath and Sean's getting there, you know, we know where to go and look, you know, which staffing levels correspond on.
If you do flip, at least for now, if you're looking for bedside reading, you, you look at that staffing. I don't. Right? The, the name and the number are up on the top of that, so kind of.
101, 225.
225301, sheriff, ought to be able to give you some confidence that that comes back to what's on.
We have hyphens in the staffing levels.
Yeah. And if you look at the number, 1,209707, you can count 225301, 703, which is all, 703 is going to be salaries in everyone who reads departments. That 1209, if you look at the column back on the sheriff's page in the staffing levels, we've got a wealth piece here that we're picking on. It adds that very first column of 2024 wages. You look over about four columns from the left, that, that is the component, that's how you get from.
Is that a million, two?
Yes.
Yep.
And they just kind of work across the columns, and then they work down on your page. So if you go across your staffing level columns and go down your page, you should see each number.
But what you won't see is that the sheriff had requested like another deputy. That's not in this book, so that'll be part of conversation.
Right.
Later in our discussions, where those staffing requests will be coming back in.
Okay.
So just eyes wide open, just want to let everybody know, that's kind of the process.
And just a fun fact, 2024 is a new premiere, it's leap year, there's two extra workdays and needed out, but that's around $266,000.
Crazy.
Two extra days.
Wow, yeah.
Overall, kind of what we figured.
That's a bean counter's way of saying happy, two more days to work.
Yeah.
Sounds like you guys are a little too excited to talk.
It's like candy for me, I know, I'm really sick.
I'm just, I'm just so glad there are some people who think it's like candy.
Yeah.
So we don't have to. So leave here on the next workday and what is.
Two extra, two workdays, two extra workdays.
Two extra workdays because of.
Two extra workdays because it falls on.
Must fall, yeah. Because there's 260 workdays in 2023, there's 262 in 2024. And she balances it to the dollar.
One thing on here while we're here, like on page five, for example, just.
Page five.
Five of 84.
Five of 84.
Five of 84, we're still on the Sheriff's page that, and Charlotte was looking at. And if you scan down that page to account, for example, near the third row, which is 727.005 donations, K9 specific. This is where you can see what we did. So that would be an assumption of a if. And so even though they had $40,576 budgeted for gifts for K9 specific this year, we put zero in that, in that account. So this follows that same logic, grants and gifts are, so that's how you can see kind of where some of those fall out that we could talk about.
Is that his golf outing?
Yeah.
Yep, one of the things in there.
It could rain.
So the way these tabs, just back to Commissioner Retro's navigation, all of these, these groupings, Justice, Public Rep, Human Services, Resource Management, all the way back through the piece that ends with Internal Service and Transfer, all of those are general funds. So as a result, all that's in those sections are their expenses. You remember, we started with all the revenues of the general fund, and then each one of those, those departments carried an expense pool, in effect, that is reflected under each of those tabs. But as you get to that next tab in the book, Special Funds, this is where the other funds of our total government can fall. And so we start with page one of 80. So the very first fund in there, fund 211 on page one of 80, is inmate housing fund. Each one of these funds, as you work your way through this section, have their revenues and the expenditures of that specific fund. And I think a lot of these you'll be very familiar with, or heard us talk to, refer to, but the magic in here, the reason we put revenues and expenditures back together is each one of those funds is in fact balanced as we go through this process. So that's the magic of the book.
So in that particular page where we have a fund balance forward amount on there, that's, that's a fund balance forward that's gonna live just within this fund only. And so you're expecting there again to have.
That's if we have a revenue shortfall, we'll defer to the fund balance of 211, company expenses, if we expend everything that we budgeted.
Secret.
Yeah, a couple of these funds that, I wrote a couple notes that we'll do, I was showing Sean today, something that Michelle had me use, utilize a long time ago, and I showed him just this morning, is you'll see a report that we can put together that shows fund balance, it'll show what was budgeted, what was used, and you're, that's why you're seeing over the, let's say over the last seven years, or let's say 10 years, four times did you dip down, otherwise it's come in. So we'll track that for you for the next meeting. The other is, he's gonna give you probably a report that shows the transfer ins and transfer outs. So what supports what between other funds and general fund, or general funds to the other funds? So ironically, when picking this one 211, this 211 inmate housing is any time that we house inmates. So we have contracts, sometimes we have one with Calcasca, or we have it with Grand Travers. So in this particular fund, there's gonna be ones that Sean's gonna discuss with you, the revenue is actually calculated and taken into consideration in, in a certain year, and then transferred in the next. So for instance, in this fund, let's say, I think in 2022, we had a contract with Calcasca for like $120,000. That $120,000 is part of that fund balance forward. So we collect it and then utilize and transfer the next year because we don't really know what we're going to get in. So it's kind of in that sense, like an accrual. So let's say for 2022, I think he's got it on there, you're maybe, maybe made $300,000, and we moved $195. So then, well, in '23, we're gonna move $195. '24, we might be moving $150, depending on if that contract canceled, I think with Calcasca, or we don't have the inmates that we're housing. So there's those influxes between the funds. So sometimes fund balance forward is actually money that we got in as extra revenue, or revenue, that we're gonna then bring over and supplement another fund. Sometimes it's just like, for instance, we have a discussion we're gonna have with Trudy, we're getting recycling, and that's something John talks to you about with your revenues. You collect on a December tax bill. So in 2022, the taxes, the money that went out, or that money I collected, $62,000 of her 2022 budget was money that was in a sense pre-collected. So that money is actually for next year. So there's this constant driving factor of how the money's coming in, how it's going out. And so we'll get more details for you at the next session and talk about what's coming in, what's moving out.
It'd be nice to know the sources of those.
Yeah. Yeah.
To understand it.
So let me just point out one, one last thing, and I'm gonna stay true to Ty's timeline here. So that very last section of the book, I think we've touched on all the other sections and kind of how they're laid out and what's in there. The last section is called Supplemental Information, I'm sorry, is what we refer to kind of until now as the narrative. And if you're, hopefully, you've seen some of these, but here, the ground rules is we went back to June, we, we send out basically allowing anybody to respond in writing or, in effect, however they choose. And so what you're gonna see is these, these pages, which are now, at least referenced in this case, are by, by each one of the departments and what was asked for. I love the minds of a page, which is terrible. But what you'll, what you'll see if, if you get to some of the larger budget items, for example, on page five, you get into the Sheriff's narrative. And so just a thought, not, not correcting in any way, but if you have questions about what's in and not, in, in general, starting with this narrative is a good, good spot to nudge the tie's point, to know what was asked for. Like I, I do not want to be presumed to be arrogant enough to have chosen which ones come in or don't come in through that filter that we're talking about. I think to be fair, what I tried to do is capture, according to that narrative and just, I've been half this out to go through each of these over time, and we kind of memorialize and we put them in the book, but this is what was the basis of their initial department request for funding.
So, go ahead, Mel, go ahead and finish your question.
The only other things in this, this section, if you look at that table of content, there's a list of police vehicles at the end for reference, there's a wage schedule, and then there's CIP pages from capital items that may come up or may not, that have been sized, prioritized. So hopefully, the point of this section, more than anything to me, is just to be a helpful reference point as we work through the process.
Just made me think of something when you said, go, I don't remember where it was in here, but it looked like it was a contract with one of the, maybe it was Sutton's Bay, and it was, was it $21,000 a year and it's gonna jump to $29,000? It was a big jump, it was like $8,000, $9,000 jump.
Or the officer.
Yeah, I think it was to, to rent, the renting officer.
Maybe the wages of $3.55.
Was that just wageses, wageses, wageses or?
I suspect it was a more senior officer.
Oh, wait, he's been there a while.
It depends on, it depends on who they assign and who.
Is it, he's asking, is that where he made?
You know, I just, I just, I was gonna ask. One of the officers, it was either Sutton's Bay or Leonard Bright, is that where we got the two?
I see what you're saying, Leonard Township.
Leonard, yes. What is the big jump?
Cause that jump was you had a new officer to now an established officer.
Oh, okay.
So it's the wages, yeah, and Leonard.
And then back in supplement, we got heat pumps for '24, a lot of heat pumps.
Can I give you the, here's my logic on that right now. Everything in the supplemental, don't assume, in general, those items are not in the book, in the numbers. On the heat pumps, I stuck in a page with that one that was simply a placeholder for, at the rate that we're running right now, there's, I think there'll be a discussion at some point around the decision about heat pumps versus.
Okay, that's exactly where I was going, so thank you.
And I think it's an either or, but we tried to put both in just to, to, for consideration.
Okay.
And as we have all of this stuff on, on the requests, those department heads are gonna come in and explain all this, right?
That's a great segue, I took ties last night, and if you wanna go there, I think there, I think there's a number, an infinite number of ways probably to go through the process. I've, I've heard Commissioner Ogier with that request, mean that would be a logical way to go through. I've heard others suggest that, why don't we have a date where we bring everybody in and we talk about staffing levels, for example? Because I could rip through, and these have all just been in the last couple of months, board meetings, but if you look at the ones that are out there, there are emergency services ones to, in effect, create new roles, there's our quality assurance roles, which are at a different pay grade than what we have today. We talked about the IT director, we talked about a part-time role becoming a full-time role, an assistant prosecutor role that would handle FOIA. Like those would all be, those are short part of that list, you could go and have a discussion about those. Obviously, to have a detailed discussion about those, those are all in different departments. So, you know, six of one, half dozen of others, to me is, there are, there are light things that you could discuss if we wanted to go deeper or to go department by department.
I kinda like your idea about the staffing thing, because we may not be able to do all of it, and so if you meet department by department and you make commitments.
No, you don't. What we've always done is listen to every department's proposal, asks, and then at the end, when we do the budget, we make the decisions, so we've heard everything. But we don't ever make commitments as we go through the budget. But we've heard it all by the end.
Is it easier to, is it easier to, I mean, having like heard their requests four weeks or two weeks after the other request, to balance that in your head is easy then, or to hear them all then and try and make what your decisions are? I guess, I don't, you guys have done it, I don't know, I'm just wondering which would be easier. I mean, there's, I see the wisdom to both of them myself, but I, at least as far as staffing, for sure. I mean, some other stuff you can, but, yes.
Well, you have to hear the, to be fair, you'd wanna hear the department head present their plans for their whole department. So if we had one session, you'd have to give every department head adequate time to explain. And I, I'd still like to, I still think it's important that every department head and talks about what they want to do. So I don't know how you wanna deal with the staffing changes.
Let's, let's talk about how many meetings we're going to have then, and that might give us some direction. And Deb gave us some potential dates. Wanna speak to that?
Sure. So we sent out, there's four dates right now that are proposed for budget work sessions. So the one is Tuesday, August 29th, from two to. Sure, I'll give you a second. So while we're talking about these, the next step could be we either, if we need one more session to review, and then the next session after that, we start encouraging the board, or the department heads to come, it's really at your discretion. But I think if we put these on our calendars, at least it gives us flexibility to go forward. So Tuesday, August 29th, from two to five.
Okay.
Okay, Thursday, August 31st, from two to five.
Yeah, hold on.
Yep.
I'm just asking, three, three hours?
I think.
I mean.
Yeah, I know, I actually responded.
I was gonna bring that mic.
I know. Well, then, well then, you'll enjoy this one, Monday, September 11th, from two to five.
Nine eleven, that's pretty good.
Yeah, nine eleven, no. Just because I have four meetings today. And then, is everybody ready for the last one?
There was one more that was not in your email, that was in a previous email.
I think we may have dropped it if people said they couldn't, couldn't do that, so Thursday, September 14th, from two to five. So it's those four dates.
That's the new one, right?
The only one it can. It was sent out to everyone.
Yeah, Lauren sent out a.
Yep, these are the dates that Laurel, that Laurel sent.
I know, I have hard nosed on all, I have hard nosed on 29th, 31st, and 11th, the only date that I'm available is the 14th.
And that's one to five?
The one on the 14th is two to five. So we did, we did kind of the graph and asked everyone to kind of give dates that work, and we realized that not everyone is going to, but we went with the majority of when people were available. We tried to not take any that were, Laurel's not here, but I know there were some, like just blackouts, can't do it, may or may not have gotten that, Jamie, so I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, I got my date. The, I mean, like, because this is a work session, it, because I do have three hard nos, the first three dates are hard nos, and the 14th is the only date I'm available. I would be willing to listen in and Zoom if I have that possibility, I don't know, I know, like, some of the dates I'm commuting, so that would be like a possibility for me to like listen in, be present, but not be present.
The only thing that stops you from listening, I mean, you're just, as a matter of public then.
Are there public meetings?
There's not, but there's no reason why we could. Well, wait, that's not true, I mean, they, people can come to the meetings, I mean, they're posted.
But we don't. But we don't vote.
Correct.
So I don't legally be physically present.
I, I think you, yeah, because we're not voting on anything, so I think you can listen in, it's not a problem, we just have to set up a Zoom so that you can do that, or a phone call or something.
Probably you can't interact, but you can listen, right?
She could make public comment, I suspect.
At the end, yeah, yeah, right.
The beginning and the end.
Right.
It seems to me that we're gonna need more than one session to go through page by page before we even get to hearing the department heads. We've, we've usually taken a couple of days to go line item by line item, because I think that's how we, how we've become familiar with it. So that looks like the 29th and the 31st, probably. So then we've got only two dates left scheduled so far for department heads and, and increases, and we, at some point, we have to make decisions.
That's the 11th and 14th.
Well, we have, what time was the 29th?
29th is two to five.
Two to five.
Yeah.
I hate to say this, but for some reason I don't get my calendar.
I like this.
I was focused all day on bringing my calendar.
Well, if we, if we do our homework, you know, maybe we can get through this book the next meeting and start department heads after that. I mean, you know, today we should have been able to understand the book, I mean, we don't all have to be together to study this and come up with questions or.
Encourage everyone to look through it and put sticky notes on where you have questions so we can answer those questions.
And so then, I mean, maybe we can do one more session together, just in the general book, and then start with the department heads.
I think we start with the department heads, it's gonna give us a better outlook on getting into it.
And also, if Laurel could again send out a scheduling thing, so we could get a couple more dates just locked in, because we may well need them.
I don't like meetings.
Budget days?
Do we have, the 19th, we'll be here for a regular board meeting, we wanna leave that afternoon, do you wanna lock that afternoon, 19th of September?
We have, so the 19th, we have a 6:30 and we have a 7:00. But I'm not sure. We could do a 3 o'clock.
I was thinking like 3, get a couple hours in.
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
And you can't do the, which one can't you?
I can't do the 29th, the 31st, or the 11th. The 14th was the only date that they have in my local.
So September 19th. September 19th.
I can do the 19th.
Can you?
Right now, I'm on a 10-day vacation, and the day, the day before I leave and the day I get back, our bookend meetings right now, which is.
Because I black out those days for you guys, for you, they're always for you.
All right, so we could add in September 19th. That seemed to work for, oh, the only thing is, that date is blocked off for the clerk, so I don't know.
On September 19th?
Um, I, I, yeah, September, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm looking at September 15th, so September 19th. Ty, that, looks like that might have been a conflict for you.
We should have a better idea.
Somebody else said, I think Doug, you said after two? But that would work.
Yeah.
I mean, so.
Or one.
See how colorful this is?
So if that, if the 19th works, say, starting at 2 o'clock. Yeah, that'd work for me.
It works for me.
Okay.
You're here already.
Add that one to the, we'll add the 19th.
At what time?
We'll say, I think we have a couple things on here, we have a 6:30. So if we said, like, two to five, two to five work session.
And that might be the meeting we plan to get our final recommendations ready for decision-making. Does that work, Doug, for you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in there, yeah. I might have to miss one of those other, or listen in on one of them, just because they're, I'm going to say I leave.
Think how much shorter it's going to be.
You said two to five or three?
You probably cut three hours off that meeting right there.
Two to five?
Yeah, let's put it in, but if we.
Actually, I can't even argue with that, I wish I could.
All right, so we've got one more date added to that. And then the next step would be, when do you want to engage the department heads? I've heard two different proposals, so I just want to be able to put dates out to them so that we can start a schedule, like, having department heads scheduled.
How many department heads, exactly?
Well, historically, what, what's been asked for the three commissioners that are here, what, what has worked best?
We've always gone, we've always gone through the line by line first to give us a whole picture view.
Okay.
And ask the questions.
Because that's when the questions come up, and that's when we generally say, well, I, you know, I'd like the registered deeds to come in and explain that.
Okay.
And then do that, and then we could schedule it from.
But that's what has worked.
Do you think we can get through in one more meeting, or just give it a gallant effort anyway?
Well, on the, on the 29th, if we started at one instead of two.
Was there a, August 29th?
I don't know if that works, but that, that gives us four hours. I bet we could get through it in four hours.
All we got to do is have coffee and lemonade set up, and then we'll get it done. I saw that at the last meeting.
So August 29th, we start at one, did you say?
I was just, and then we could have the department people starting the next meeting.
So we have like three per session?
August 29th.
I don't even know how many.
So you're, you're, you're inferring we should start at 1 o'clock on the 11th.
Usually you only have the department heads have a request. Unless you see something, then you go line by line that you want to discuss. But the majority of what is in, in the first flat folder of Deb's letter, these are what you want to have as your list of, to make sure that those are discussed. So on that second page, you're going to want to talk about some of these things that are need clarification and that are not in the budget, that you will approve outside the norm.
Right, and some of them might be simple, like, we might just say, okay, we've talked, well, we have had discussions in the past, the $20,000 wheel and dam hydraulic seal replacement. More than likely, we just should be doing that, so that might not even take discussion.
Your biggest ones probably are your sheriff and your 911, right? Yeah, and then him to explain the childcare.
Yeah.
Just because it's.
We'll have to have a discussion on the software to see. And that, again, that might be somewhere where we see where we are in the budget, or if that has to be kicked back another year. Hate to say that, but I mean, we could, we'll know where we're at, you know? A quick conversation about the cameras.
I don't see anything about the A back here.
No, because your, your RFPs are next month, right?
Yep.
Yep, so until you have your RFPs.
But that's a big discussion.
So are we going to, should we get something for the 29th?
So on the 29th, is everybody okay with starting at one?
Yes.
I will be Zooming.
Okay.
But.
So that will be one to five on Tuesday, August 29th.
Most riveting Zoom meeting ever.
And we've also added two to five on September 19th.
Yeah, hold on, I gotta go back. One to five.
We'll send out another reminder for everyone.
I know, I just got to put it in here, though, so nothing else comes up and takes those dates off. So Zoom count.
Well, that, those are, that takes us through the agenda. Anything else before we go to public comment?
I think I would just say, I'm going to shoot for Monday, September 11th, as the date for department heads to come in unless, unless we seriously want to move that up, just so I can let department heads know to be aware that that's the date that we'll be trying to rifle through then. Is, are there people, because that, yeah. So are we just going to do when they have a request?
I think so, I think, just because, you know, typically, we used to do like nine to two. So now you're doing like three hours instead, you know, two to five, where we used to start at nine and then, you know, end at one or two. So we're kind of missing that. I think if, I think if Deb could get with the sheriff, I think that would be a great start because it really talks about with the detective and the cars, the future of where's the boat going to be held, things that Sean and I have talked about, you have maintenance costs from your marine budget wants to go through tonight. So those are some things that he may want to solidify and bring to you, I would think, I would, if you can make him first. And then 911 with the council and changing of the guards of the staffing is big. So maybe if, because I know Matt and the sheriff are typically the ones having meetings outside.
Maybe we'll shoot for that Thursday, August 31st, to just be a date if that works for the sheriff, start there.
What was the one we added?
The 20th.
We added September 19th from two to five.
The 29th was 1 o'clock, though, right? Starting at one on the 29th.
Thursday, that's Thursday, right? The 19th.
What was the other day?
Okay, so, so just to clarify, I'm going to go through the dates one more time, okay? Okay, so.
No, I sent, no, I got on it as soon as we got out.
Here are the confirmed dates that we've got, so Tuesday, August 29th, one to five.
August 29th.
Thursday, August 31st, two to five, and we'll be focusing on primarily the sheriff and public safety at that meeting. Then on Monday, September 11th, from one to five, that will be the date that we invite all the department heads. We should know by then which ones we want to invite to come and present. And then Thursday, September 14th, from two to five. And then lastly, September 19th, which is a Tuesday, so that's our regular, that's a board meeting. And that's going to be from two to five.
You don't have to tell the sheriff he's got from two to five.
We'll save for public safety.
Two to five minutes.
So, Melinda. Sorry, I think that's enough time to hear from the department head.
I think so, I don't think there's that many requests that.
Any last questions? Any public comment? John Darcy, any comment? Any commissioner comment?
I just looked up, though, Melinda, the Conservancy owns 3,000 acres that are in their private hands. The 11,000 are like John Gallagher's family's farm, so 3,000 acres is not a lot. Look at the acreage in.
What's evaluation now? We need to look at the valuation.
I just don't think it was quite fair to say what you said, because I think that.
Well, you saw it in the report, and that's what, yeah, you have seen that report, there's pages of them. But the valuations are, are what are important. What are the SEVs on those pieces?
Motion to adjourn.
Look at that.
Look at that, let it go.